And good evening and welcome. That's right, I am here live from Studio B. The race is Situate. And the race is for selectmen here in the town. Look at that, one of our reporters just straggled in the rain. Good to see you, Charlie. I'm the moderator, Charles. Matthewson will be asking questions with me tonight. We've got three of the four candidates here for Situate's selectmen. We have Karen Ernst Conley, John J. McLaughlin Jr., and Andrew Goodrich. Now, there is a fourth candidate, and that is William Tibbetts. We did invite him to attend. He called me up and demanded the questions ahead of time. I started to tell him in the two or 300 forums I've done here over the years, "I will never do that, that's not what we do." He started speaking loudly, saying it was non-negotiable, and slammed down the phone. So I'm making the assumption tonight that he will not be here. We also have Situate Cable. Thank you so much for being here tonight, and you'll be able to watch this forum as well. Amy Leonard is here from WATD. She will be doing the timing. Now, we have the green card, that means go. Red means stop. Yellow means you have 10 seconds. And what we're going to do now, since we chose the opening order, we're going to go with our one-minute opening statement from the candidates, and then we're going to go to traffic, and we're going to get into the questions. And it should be a lot of fun, and I'll talk a little bit more about the format. So, let's say good evening again, and let's begin tonight with Karen. Do you like to use your full name, or do you like Karen Ernst Conley? Or just like Karen Conley?
Karen Conley.
Okay, that's fine. So let's begin with Karen Conley. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for having us tonight. I'm very proud to call Situate my hometown. In 1965, my parents moved to Situate and have been there ever since. My husband and I got married in 1995 and bought our house in Situate to be closed if they had money. Since that time, I have been at 23 town meetings. I have been the co-president of the Jenkins PTO. I ran the 2007 override, which provided funds for operating budgets for the town and the schools. I was on the-- six years on the advisory committee, which prepares all the wards and the advisory book for town meeting. I have served four years as chair of the Community Preservation Committee, and I was the co-chair of the 2015 override to build the Public Safety Building and the middle school. I'm a very positive person. I believe in giving to my community, and I'm very proud to be running for selectmen in Situate.
Thank you very much. That was the opening statement from Karen Conley. Now, let's go to Andrew Goodrich for your opening statement.
All right.
Oh, I'm sorry, did I miss the order up there? You know what I did?
That's never happened.
Okay. Let's go right to John McLaughlin. I'm sorry.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here for this panel discussion. I am one of the selectmen in the constituency because I know it can make a difference for the better in this beautiful town. I have extensive experience, education, and certification in multiple areas that will help this town, such as the most talked about and most misunderstood ADA compliance, Department of Transportation, and education. This experience certification can generate significant funds for the town through grants for which my certifications allow me the ability to apply. My experience and abilities to advise and educate my selectmen colleagues will enable the town to avoid future complaints and lawsuits. Lawsuits which will cost the town a great deal of money over the past years. I am confident that my responses during this panel will demonstrate my abilities and my feelings about so many issues facing that town. Both this year and this year.
Okay. Thank you very much. That was John McLaughlin. Now, we're going to go to Andrew Goodrich.
Thank you. Then, let me tell you a bit about myself. I'm the father of three young boys from one of the United States, and they'll all be going to Long Island. But I spent the last 15 years doing public policy work, both at the State House and actually across the country, both federal, local, and other state, much to their issues. I really got involved mostly with the brown water issue. It was after 12 straight days of having brown water at our house that our three-year-old son came downstairs, and he had just browned all of his face. We thought he ate a cookie over brown. We said, "What did you do?" He said, "I had a glass of water," and that was it. So, my wife and I made up the "no more brown water" signs the folks around Situate had seen, and we wanted to start a conversation. And that conversation is about trying to get more people involved in town government. And that's why I think we need a new blood in town government. I think we need to perform town meeting. I think we need to stand up for the taxpayers. And if someone gets brown water, we need to make sure that they're not paying for that brown water.
Okay. Thank you very much. That was Andrew Goodrich. That was his opening statement. We're going to go to traffic in just a moment. I'm looking for our traffic person in there. It looks like Ben. Here we go. He's talking with a guest in the lobby. It looks like Mr. Tibbetts may have shown up. I'm not quite sure. I was under the impression that he wasn't going to attend here. But we will go to traffic in just a minute. Meanwhile, I'll tell you a little bit more about the format tonight, since we're not going to traffic. What we do with the format is very simple. We ask the candidates to have prepared opening and closing statements ready, and the opening one minute, the closing no longer than a minute as well. And Amy, of course, is doing the timing. Now, we also do a round of questions in between from reporters. And when we ask those questions, we ask that those questions be limited to one-minute answers. Now, I usually give you about a five-second grace period with that, and then if you keep talking, then it's the bell and you can stop talking. And then we do the lightning round, which is a lot of fun. And the lightning round is questions that are either a yes-or-no answer, or one or two sentences tops. And that's usually our favorite time of the forum. We're going to go to traffic right now, because we've got Lisa DeMilo standing by tonight. Lisa, what's happening out in the highways? Okay, we're back in studio now, and this is the race for selectmen, and our fourth candidate, William Tibbetts, has come here, and now he's going to give us his opening statement. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you for having me. I would just like to speak on behalf of the people of Situate that have been down there for a long time. There's a lot of discontent in Situate right now. Been a whole lot of people down there. I'm a lifelong resident, hundreds of years of heritage in my family. The taxes are just out of control now, and people have been having to leave that town for a long time. And I believe people want to be treated fairly. And I believe they're picking and choosing who can do business and who can't. I think everybody needs to be treated fairly in this world, whether you're race, color, creed. I believe everybody should obey the rules, and no one's better than anyone else. I have a lot of plans for the town, the seniors, for the water, the brown water, also for the developments that if you saw the--
Sorry, one minute. We give one-minute opening statement.
Yeah, if you saw the Toll Brothers article in the Patriot Ledger this weekend--
That's so. Excuse me, your time is over. That's one minute. That's one minute, the opening statement. We'll get back to this again. If you feel like you didn't get to say everything in your opening statement, you can do that in your closing statement. But everybody's limited to one minute. So now, we're going to go to questions. Let's start with Charles Mathiason.
Okay, thank you. Let me share.
Sure.
Thank you for my opening statement.
Okay. Go ahead, Charlie.
At least two of you have talked about taxes being too high, and you're not happy with the procedures in town government. There's also some talk about a town charter, need for a town charter review, which is done, people who don't know, in most towns periodically, every five years or so. So I would like to begin there. First, I will go-- I know it's radio, and I'm sorry, listeners, you can't see that, but from my left to right, beginning with Andrew, do you support a charter review? And what would you recommend a charter commission consider?
All right. I absolutely support a charter review, and I think we need to look very hard at and be open with any sort of other alternative form of government that includes getting rid of town meeting as we know it. That means looking to either a representative town meeting, or even being open to the possibility of an online system, or any other alternative form that's there. And I think we need to be able to bring more people into the process. If we're not doing that, then we're failing as a town to be able to bring those folks involved and involved in the process. And it's one of the first things that I've talked about in this campaign, is making sure that we have that charter review, so we're actually fundamentally changing the way that whole event goes.
Karen Conley, charter review?
I'm in favor of a charter review. We haven't had one in Situate in more than 10 years. I know there is discontent out there with the way town meeting is run. We have an open town meeting, and as Andrew said, we could go to a representative town meeting. I would suggest, however, that there are issues related to how the state controls the various measures that you can take as a town. You can go to a city council type of government, you can go to a mayor type of government. I'm not entirely sure about remote participation, especially in these days of hacking, et cetera, et cetera. And I do understand that people want to have a voice at town meeting. And the truth is, when people want to have a voice at town meeting, they do have a voice at town meeting. But, you know, I have to say, this year at town meeting, the first night was packed because there were issues that were important to people. The second night, there were about 100 of us there, and the second night, none of my opponents were there, and we passed a $57 million operating budget for the schools and for our enterprise funds. And I do think that they should have been there.
John McLaughlin, charter review?
I'm all for it as well. Sorry, the reason I wasn't at the second meeting, my father passed away. I buried him that Monday, so Tuesday I was still mourning my father. In regards to issues, contract, remote participation was something that I established with the community facilities a few years ago. It does work. It makes it available for people who have mobility issues not to attend meetings, also social or afraid of the public, that can address these issues. Just a matter of moderator, that could time it, that we're doing here, that can talk that way. Thank you.
Okay. Same question.
Mr. Tibbetts?
Yes, I believe it's a no-brainer. I think there needs to be more oversight. I think we need to look at reevaluating our situation with the 2002 Community Preservation Act. I think it's contracting itself now. There was an article this weekend, in the Weekend Edition of the Patriot Ledger, that mentioned about the developers. There was a meeting this weekend, or excuse me, an article in the Patriot Ledger about the developers and the deals that they're making with the towns, and one of the terms they used was "wild, wild west." And there is no oversight. Only 39 out of the 50 states have oversight, and Massachusetts is not one of them. It's considered one of the worst, along with Montana. There's just so much to talk about, but yes, I do agree with the charter review.
Okay. Let's drill down a little bit more. Representative town meeting. Situate is barely large enough to have representative town meeting. I reside in Plymouth. We have representative town meeting. I just came today from Vermont, where measures to make town meeting more efficient have almost killed it. Representative is tough unless you have a strong precinct system. So let's make the same round again, and talk about the pros and cons of representative town meeting in Situate.
Okay, who do you want to start with?
Let's do the same order.
Okay. Start with Andrew.
So, first of all, all this should be encompassing with a general master plan for the town, which the town hasn't had in about 15 years. But the pros and cons of a charter review, if we're going to be moving in this direction, we have to keep all options on the table. And yes, it's right that we may have to have some state intervention, but that's fine. I'm not afraid of going in that sort of direction. But the pros and cons really come down to, the answer is, will people be involved? Will people be coming out? And the answer was clear. 712 people the first night. That's more than 95% of the people are going home. So I am absolutely open in saying, that's one possibility. Why not, why stop there? Why not look for other opportunities and other ways to actually do what we're trying to do?
Karen Conley?
There may be a day when remote participation for town meeting, which is different than what John is talking about, running a committee where it's a small committee meeting, and people are able to call in, the committee members. So I just want to be clear that I'm not saying that at some point in time, making town meeting accessible to people with handicaps or problems shouldn't be considered and done. But the way town meeting is run, town meeting either as an open town meeting, or as a representative town meeting, is the legislative body of the town. And because of that, people need to be on the floor to vote for motions, to vote for reconsideration, to vote. And so, I think that at the very least, Situate could think about representative town government. But, you know, and we could have as many as 200 members. We could have probably as many as we want. I know in New Hampshire, the state legislature up there is, I think, the largest legislative body in the world. So I don't think there's anything preventing us from having so many people as representatives to town meeting, that you would know someone, your neighbor, someone three doors down. But you're right, you'd have to go to the precinct system.
One minute. Same question.
John McLaughlin?
I agree with everybody so far, but the issue would be representative would be a census, how you would get the precincts by census. You've got to realize that there's a large population that comes in in the summertime that has voting votes. Would you have a meeting at the time in the summertime that they have, fair say? And who represent them?
Do summer residents vote in Situate?
They can if they're registered as residents, and they're not registered somewhere else, right?
I understand the voter registration laws, but it seems to me that just summer residents. Interesting. Mr. Tibbetts, representative town meeting?
I think that everybody needs a voice. I'm not in favor of having a group of people decide for the masses. Democracy is what this country's been built on, and I think that it should stay the same. I do, however, believe in online voting. I think as a society, we've become so busy with the kids' sports, and just, you know, just making a phone call now and dialing the numbers is even too much for some people as seniors. They get to flip phones, or they don't have phones or whatnot. And I know in Situate, we have lots of seniors. We also have 1,700 veterans, where some of them guys are pretty understaffed down at the town hall. I was at the town hall today, visiting with some of the people. It's difficult for some of the veterans to get from the VFDub and to come down and vote, and to come down to the meetings. So I talked to a couple of veterans today, and one of the things we should, I think we really need to take care of our veterans. We could have 1,700 of them. Thank you.
Any more follow-up for that?
Nope.
Okay. On the official election ballot that's coming up, there is a question, and that is for the debt exclusion. And I'm going to read it to you, but I think I might have left it in the newsroom, unless somebody wants to go and grab a copy of that. Maybe he's going to go--
I can help you out there.
Okay. Do you want to paraphrase it?
Yeah, I would paraphrase it this way. People have grown old in Situate waiting for a senior center. Do you like this plan, or do you think there's a different plan? Let's start with Karen Conley.
Yeah. Are you for or against the debt exclusion?
Debt exclusion for $12 million.
Correct. I know full well the problem in Situate with the senior center. The 2007 operational override that I ran, that I chaired, included a question about building a senior center. So I've been around and around and around on this question. This proposal is at the 11th hour. I think people need to decide, based on the proposed plan, whether they're for it or against it. I am in favor of a senior center. We need a senior center. We need a better senior center than we have. I will, if I'm elected to the Board of Selectmen, implement the plan that the voters choose. And if they choose a standalone center, we will have to work to make sure that abudders are treated properly, fairly, and that we deal with the issues of parking, traffic that seem to bother some people. On the other hand, if it fails, then we need to have a new plan for the senior center and figure out where it should go. And I would be in favor of trying to reuse the Gates Building and come to the voters with a plan within the year. I hope the seniors get what they want and need.
Okay. I did find the ballot. I'm just going to read the questions along with it. Shall the town of Situate be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition 2.5, so-called the amounts required to pay for the bonds to be issued, in order to demolish Section C of the Old Gates School? Design, construct, and furnish a new senior center, and design, renovate, and furnish the Veterans Memorial Gym? So that's the way it's on?
And there's a special town meeting for May 18?
Yes. I'd like to answer that question.
Sure. You want to go next? Yeah, definitely.
Thank you. One thing I want to mention is that we, as residents, are paying millions of dollars in studies, not even construction, or the drawing up of plans, which needs to be curbed. We spent a million dollars to design a senior center that we failed to build. It's a million dollars that we just threw right out the window. The new senior center, you're only going to have five days to think about it and vote on it. May 13th is proposed, vote them on on May 18th. The last town meeting that Ms. Conley spoke of, they saved everything for the very end, and then very lightly, quickly said, "We'll meet back here tomorrow at 7:00." They could have said next week, they could have said next year. They could have waited, they could have put it off, they could have announced it. No one knew to go back the next day. That's why there was only 100 people. Thank you.
Okay. Let's go to John now.
I am all for the senior center. For the past couple of years, I have been actively involved with them at nighttime, giving lectures and speeches and educating them. And in some cases, it comes down to where it's do or die. In regards to capacity, they don't have it. In regards to the ability, they're renting other places, so the cost effectiveness not there. So we have to do, because it's cost effective, to move forward. And on May 13th, I'm supporting this, and I'm going to vote for it to go through for the 18th ballot. So this is what I'm looking forward to, is people to get involved for the campus, because it does affect the senior center, the veterans. And it's a win-win. We have to do this.
Okay. That was John. Let's go to Andrew. Same question.
So I support the senior center, but also let you know how I think we should pay for it. I have a plan to lower property taxes in Situate, and that includes cutting our CPC funding in half from 3% to 1.5%, and then having a general override for 1.25%. No one's going to be going out buying a brand-new TV, but we're going to be respecting the taxpayers and bringing your rate down. So that should bring in about $900,000. $400,000 of that is what the senior center's going to need. So that's $500,000 that we can then use for maintenance and other things that we've talked about, that the town needs, to fix our brown water, to fix our schools. We need to start thinking outside of the box, and we need to be respecting the taxpayers by doing what's right. And we can support the senior center, and we can do it in a responsible way. We have to accelerate our debt payoff. Situate right now is the eighth-most in-debt town in the Commonwealth. Every resident owes over $6,000. We need to fix that.
Thanks. Charles, questions for candidates?
Okay, we have four newbies here, let's say. Some of you have town experience, have experience on town committees, but you would be first-term selectmen, whomever is elected. We find generally first-term selectmen say things like, "We're going to improve town government efficiency and productivity," as Andrew just did. And he was fairly specific on a couple of things. I'd like to ask everyone, beginning with John McLaughlin, what specifically would you do, not in generalities, to make town government more productive, efficient?
I'd focus on the infrastructure, both on the structure itself, the buildings and the property, and the personnel at the town hall. So they're cross-trained better, they get the education they need to qualify for the grants, and the grants would be what we get, the money. We already pay our taxes, but we're not getting the grants because we don't have the prerequisites done, that qualify, the training and certification. Just like when you go for a college grant loan, you have to have certain prerequisites. We don't have them. So over the past like five years, I was studying and getting these things to branch out. So in my opening statement, I did mention, this is what I would be doing. I'll open the eyes, get them to work together, and spearhead, get the money there, and the programs set up. There's a transition plan the town has, it's a five-year plan. We have what's called a seven-year plan, that the state trains you to do what you want. I would implement the seven-year transition plan, so we have a valid reasoning to go down.
Thank you.
I'm trying to be fair. Looking at the future of people.
William Tibbetts, what would you do specifically to make the town government work better?
Specifically, I think we need to reevaluate and take another look at the Conservation Preservation Act of 2002. Originally, they, the state matched the town dollar-for-dollar. Now, I believe it's down to about 20 to 25 cents, which is still common audio tax dollars, it's just your state tax dollars. Also, the Community Preservation Act was enacted to help out the town with little league fields and whatnot. It wasn't enacted to sell land to big-time developers. The last deal we did was with the Toll Brothers, and there was $200,000, and then an irregular size soccer field, which they didn't even follow through on. The town selectmen just took that $400,000, and now they're using it for someone else. So they didn't even follow through on the deal. We need better negotiating. Thank you.
Okay. Let's go to Karen next.
Well, one of the things I'm concerned about is the state of our elementary schools. And we now have four elementary schools which are not at capacity. I would like to take a look at those schools and figure out, is there a way to move students so that we can maybe even close one of the buildings? I'm even more concerned about the fact that the schools are not in good condition, at least cushion and habitually. And I would like to see, on the short term, could we look at MSBA to help us fix those schools today and in the near future, before we get a new school, which I am somewhat skeptical about as well. I would like to address the issue of CPC. CPC has allowed the town to buy 400 acres of open space, primarily in the West End. However, we've just bought five acres of property right on Situate Harbor, on First Cliff. It would be a magnificent place for people to be able to visit and to go. We have put aside $2.5 million to build affordable housing for senior citizens through CPC.
Thank you. One minute. Let's go to Andrew. Same question.
Thank you. So, in specifics, transparency, it's an issue I care deeply about. I've pledged that every one of my emails, as selectmen, will be automatically disclosed to the public. There's no reason that the public needs to be searching for documents. Most of these documents that we need, that people want to see, need to be disclosed before even asking for them. It's, again, it comes down to respect. You pay for them, you should get access to them. So there's no reason that Situate can't be a leader, not only in Massachusetts, but in the country, for disclosing documents and getting things out as easily and quickly as possible. And I hope other people agree that that transparency issue is going to help people understand and look for savings. Other thing I'd love to do would be to be warm in the bulk purchasing, which I know that the Plymouth County Treasurer's Office participates in, but Situate does not participate in their full capacity.
Okay. Oh, good. Respond to the-- All right. Let me ask a question here. The North Situate Civic Association has a number of concerns regarding promoting their community and their local businesses. They're holding a meeting this week to address some of those issues. What can you do for them as a member of the Board of Selectmen? I know this has been an ongoing issue. Karen, what can you do for them?
Well, I think the primary issue up there at this point is the sewer issue. And I think that has to be put front and center. I know there is a plan that was developed many, many years ago in response to the fact that we were discharging sewerage into the North River, and the federal government has come up with a plan. That plan has been implemented, but it still, it has a long way to go. North Situate is not currently next in line. I think it should be, and so that's what I would suggest at least initially needs to be done.
Okay. Thank you. Bill Tibbetts, what do you think about this, North Situate?
Yeah, it's a difficult situation. There's really not much you can do right now. There's, unfortunately, I have to say the same thing about the brown water. These are two problems that are our biggest right now, as far as business infrastructure in that area. I really don't have any answers for the North Situate, because I'm at a loss as to why
I really don't have any answers for the North Situate, because I'm at a loss as to why it hasn't been done. I know Jamie's burnt down, and they won't get, they won't give them a special permit. That's one of the first things that they need. Jamie's was a staple in our town for a long, long time. I have some friends that were waitresses there their whole life, bartenders. It's been a staple of our community, and I think we should give them a special permit to get that North Situate revitalized. Cosmos does a nice job. Some of the other businesses down there do a nice job. But it's something that we're going to need to piece away at. It's not going to be a quick fix.
Okay. Thank you. That was William Tibbetts. Let's go to Andrew. Same question.
Yeah, it's a travesty, but again, looking at the old master plan from 15 years ago, that sewer in North Situate should have been done. This is something that was just, it was not a priority for the current, for the board for many years, and that's why we need change, and that's why we need new blood in there to understand that we need to make changes. Who's the economic small business ombudsman in town? We don't have him. Who's going and talking to these folks on a daily basis? Well, I've gone, and I've talked to the small business owners in there, and sometimes they don't hear from the board. Part of it, for economic development, you need to be like a really good caterer. A really good caterer is always there, but not always seen, but when there's a problem, the caterer's going to step in and fix the problem. And that's what the board can do.
Okay. And then let's go to John. Same question. I just put the mic where it's right on.
I'm going to just look at you, because I'm being distracted by--
Yeah.
That's why I've been disrupted. Okay. I believe that there should be a special permit issued, or there should be a tiny string, a year or two on it, to get them back on their feet, and then make it retroactive to fall into place. The other businesses have to realize that you have to unify together, not just with, you're segregated from the rest of the town. You've got to bond yourself better with the center of the town. And that's what we don't have. We don't have cross-references like we should, because they're not interfacing. That's why my thing is, you move forward, you want everybody to interact and bond with each other. The next part they're talking about is the sewer's treatment plant. They do that, well, they're going to charge, like they charge the residents for water, you know, for $6,000 and something, and most towns, it's $50 to water hookup, or business gets charged, like, exuberant account, like $50,000 to hook up. You have to be realistic as to what's going on. There is a need, we can temporarily fix that need, we have the power, and it can be done.
Thank you very much. That's John McLaughlin. Question, Charlie, for the candidates.
Let's tackle the brown water. I can't imagine brown water coming out of my tap. And as I said earlier, I was just in Vermont, where we get sulfur water in the Champlain Valley, and that was bad enough. Brown water, what needs to be done specifically? It's about time that Situate solves its water problem. This has been going on way too long. Who hasn't gone first yet?
Let's go--
John.
Brown water. It comes down, the sedimentation gets in there. The pipes are old, and you're going to make things loose, and you're going to travel. And it's a matter of crap shoot. Whoever turns the faucet on first is going to have that projection come up in their end. And if, based on timeframe, if it's summertime, and everybody comes in vacationing, they think that's when the brown water is the highest, is the most noticed, because you're eroding the sedimentation. It's there. You've got to break it up, flush out the line completely, and then seal the end where the crack is. Send something down there to seal the holes. And we've got to fix it, okay? But I'd rather have it replaced, like most people want it replaced. We don't have the budget for that. You've got to get in funds and grants, and you're doing repairs back and forth. These same grants can fix that at the same time. So we have to uniform and overlay projects together. If you're doing water, do a sewer at the same time.
One minute. Thank you. Let's go, Bill Tibbetts next. Same question?
Yeah, the brown water, it's been around for a long time. The pipes are old. Town was 1636. It was originally Hanover, Marshfield, and Norwell. We started all those towns, and then, you know, the pipes are old, and it's just, it's just the way it is. And, you know, my suggestion to people is, you know, get a water filtration system, or, you know, get bottled water, or whatever you've got to do. But, you know, the people that have been living down there forever don't, most of the people that don't want it, I mean, we don't want it, the brown water, but what has been a problem for many, many years is still a problem. And it's kind of like the North Situate situation. If you don't piece away at something, it'll never get done, you know? You know, a marathon starts with the first step. And I think we've just got to take our first step with those situations. But like I said, we can't expect too much out of those situations. And thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tibbetts, let's go to--
Andrew Goodrich.
Yes.
Oh, good.
Thank you. That's going to go to next.
All right, thank you. So, we've heard that we should put our hands up, and we've heard that we don't have enough money. We have to be able to find the money to do so. There's other things we need to understand, too. There's about 50 miles of what's called AC pipes, or asbestos concrete pipes, that are going to need to be replaced. We need to have a long-term plan over the next 10, 15, 20 years to fund that. That's why I've called for the Clean Water Trust Fund, which is similar to what the state does. But we're not the only town in Massachusetts that has this problem. I'm more than happy to help lead a statewide effort to see if we need to get state funding to do this. Stoughton, and Hanover, and other towns across south of Boston have this issue and problem, so we can look for funding in other places. And I'm not just going to put my hands up and give up.
Okay. Karen?
Well, I will say, over the past 10 years, the town has committed $22 million already to fixing our water problems, which just don't relate only to brown water, although clearly brown water is extremely distressing. In addition, they did approve $16 million in more spending to upgrade our water treatment plant, and to do other fixes at wells, et cetera. But in the short term, I would like to see if we can do a house-to-house canvas in those affected areas, to find out how many people, houses have this problem, and how chronic is it? And I would like to suggest that we should provide an abatement on people's water bills. I do not think that people should be paying for brown water.
Why not? Come on.
I think it's terrible, and I wouldn't pay for it, and I don't think anyone else should either. So as far as I'm concerned, and then maybe they can use whatever abatement to at least get some filtration systems in place, because if we can't solve it in the short term, we have to provide people with some solution.
Okay. I want to do this, I want to go to the lightning round, and we're going to go to our final statements. Now, the lightning round questions, that clock is a little fast, by the way, but the lightning round questions are either a yes or no answer, or one or two sentences, and the reporter will tell you what they want. I know this is, this is tough for people to do, and it's, we're going to our lightning round. It's going to be yes or no answers, or one or two sentences, and the reporter will tell you. Okay. So, meanwhile, let's go to what I ask every single forum, and Charlie knows what I'm going to say. County government, should we stay or should we go? I know I'm going to have the head of the county government there, Dan Pala, texting me and complaining to me, but county government, should we stay or should we go? Two sentences, Andrew.
I think there's like the bulk purchasing, there's good things about it, but I'm happy where we are now.
Okay, so stay. Karen Conley, what do you think? Stay or go, county government?
I think we have to stay, at least in the short term. They run our courts, they run our probate system, they run the jail. I, you know, I don't know how you do without them.
All right, two sentences. John McLaughlin, stay or go, county government?
Yes, stay.
Okay, good. Nice and brief there. Bill Tibbetts, two sentences, county government, stay or go?
Stay with an increase in oversight, please.
Okay, there we go. Charles Mathewson, lightning round.
We've touched on CPC, so I'll do the same thing.
All right.
Community Preservation Act, stay or go?
Let's start-- well, let's start at this end this time. Bill Tibbetts, stay or go, Community Preservation Act, stay or go?
Community Preservation Act has counteracted itself over the past 17 years, and now it must go.
Go, okay. Stay or go, John McLaughlin, Community Preservation Act?
It may go, must go, because it's failing, and experientially failing.
Okay. Karen, what do you think? Stay or go?
Stay at 1.5%.
Okay. Andrew Goodrich, Community Preservation Act?
I'm glad, I'm glad you agreed to come down to 1.5%. It's an epiphany. I love it.
It's not my money.
Okay. One more lightning round question, Charles.
Oh, what is your favorite news source? Andrew, Wall Street Journal?
Okay, Karen?
New York Times.
Okay, John, favorite news source?
Wall Street Journal.
Okay, Phil?
Situate Mariner.
Okay. Now, let's go to our, again, that clock's a little fast. Let's go to our closing statements. We're going to reverse the order. Last time we ended with William Tibbetts, so this time we will begin with William Tibbetts. One minute, your final wrap-up.
Yeah, no, I just, I'm honored, and I'm blessed to be put in this situation and be taken seriously for this voting process. I do believe I am the best candidate. I did some very special things with my life. I've overcome the odds more than once, and I'm going to do it again. Please vote Tibbetts on the 18th, 2019, for Situate Selectmen, and God bless you all.
Thank you very much. That was a closing statement from William Tibbetts, and now we're going to go to Andrew Goodrich.
Thank you. Again, I'm running, because I want to make sure that we're going to be respecting the taxpayer, but also understanding that we need to get more people involved in town government. And by doing that, that means talking to folks, reforming how we're running town government, but also knowing that policy ideas have to come from everywhere across the town. I'm also happy to announce, right here, that I actually have the endorsement of Governor Charlie Baker, and because of my past work that I've done, both in the governor's office and as a budget analyst in the State House. So I'm committed to helping Situate, and I'm excited to get to work. Thank you.
Thank you. That was Andrew Goodrich. Now, let's go to John McLaughlin.
Again, thank you for this opportunity. I believe my responsibilities have demonstrated my belief centers, as well as my ability to perform and achieve goals as just a town. Now, with issues that are strong, regards to brown water, we can overlay other issues on top, the streets and roads on top, not just fixing the pipes, but the roads itself.